Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Rebecca, would you please call the roll?
Flornoy.
Here.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen. Thompson.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any additions to the agenda this evening? If not, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the June 11th council meeting. We have approval of the June 15th payroll of $121,744.91. We have approval of wayfinding commission minutes from the last two meetings. Approval of library board minutes. You have your resolution for salaries for city employees for the coming fiscal year, and these are all budgeted, but they need to be published. So you have that full list of all city employees and their hourly and monthly wages. We have a resolution approving cigarette permits. Approval of liquor license for Casey's General Store 1714, the Walton Club, Come and Go, and Torino's Pizza and Steakhouse. Approval of claims in the amount of $390,351.40, of which S.A.K. Construction, Inc., is Any questions regarding the consent agenda items? Not an entertaining motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Please call the roll.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes, with abstention from the minutes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, Counsel, we're going to have a presentation on the Pocket Park that you remember or recall a year ago, we approved the concept of the park, which is going to be at the corner of Briggs and North Main, the old Tribune Printing Building. It is property is owned by Alex Stanley, who is here in the front row, and it is a memorial park to his wife who passed away. And Dennis Reynolds is the designer of the park, and he's going to give us a presentation tonight.
Yes, thanks for having me. It's an exciting project. I've been working with Alex now since, I think we started about January, February perhaps, and we really see this as a terrific opportunity to provide something that will be special to the community, as well as create a special memory regarding Petra. These are some of the benchmark imagery, and we went through, oh, I imagine 40 or so images that we kind of studied and said, what do we like, what we don't like? What is the sort of the character of the park? And these were some that we looked at specifically in terms of use of raised curbs and planters to contain the plant material. We want to work with the existing terrazzo that was the first floor of the building. We think it's really a unique opportunity to have a park with a terrazzo. And certainly, the Romans did it hundreds of years ago, and those pavements are still here with us now. And so it's a very durable material that can be very appropriate for a park. We also were inspired by some of Petra's interest and past in terms of fashion and ballet. Some of the programming that we looked at, how to use the space, we want it to be very flexible and comfortable. We think it can be a lot of things for the community as it evolves, and people understand how they can meet people there, have a meal, have a special event. Maybe it's something related to the Performing Arts Center next door. Could be even a formally programmed pre-function or special event regarding that. And so we've tried to design features that allow all these things to happen within the park, including things that are not exciting to look at but are necessary, like electrical service and water service, and a storage building where material maintenance items can be kept. So we have, boy, your screens are really bright. I'm used to projecting onto a wall where everything goes dull, so we're not quite as radioactive as these drawings might look, but that's okay. Better has to be this way than the other. So you'll see the basic organization. It's a very symmetrical park. As you arrive from the east through a gateway, the perimeter of the park is defined by some raised planters that allow us to grow plant material on top of the terrazzo. We did not want to try to demolish and cut into the terrazzo and open up lots of potential issues. So we have raised planters that allow us to have these flowering perennials and ornamental grass. It's called carra forester grass. It's about this high. It's very formal, almost looks like a hedge, and we think it can be very beautiful while also being a low-maintenance solution for some of these plantings. And then you can see the western fourth of the site is where it's currently gravel. We are looking at removing the gravel backfill and bringing in good topsoil and planting lawn and shade trees in that area. And the lawn would be sloping up from the pavement to the right, sloping up to the left, so just a slight rise. You can sit there on the lawn and watch people come and go or enjoy an event. On the far west, you can see a small structure. It's about 10 by 10, and that's our maintenance building on-site where we can keep some items in there secure, as well as a trellis in front of it. In the middle of the site, you see a square pergola, which really creates a center point for the site and creates a setting for a piece of art that we're currently exploring. The long line to the right of that, that goes from the east gateway to the pergola, is a harvest table, so it can seat about 20 people. And this is a really a nice way to come together as a community. You can either sit down next to some strangers, or some days, maybe it's just you and a few friends, or maybe you plan ahead and all 20 of your friends sit at the table together. So a very flexible type. And then movable furniture as well, and movable tables. And again, we're being careful how we specify these, so they're heavy enough that they don't walk off. You might be surprised, of all the parks I've designed over my career, it's never been a problem, the furniture disappearing. On the other hand, movable furniture has consistently been shown as being very important for public spaces. People want to choose, even if it's just picking it up and moving it over one feet, we have a psychological need to kind of control where we sit. And so we think it's important to have that option as well. The next slide shows a slight variation with the round pergola in the middle. And we're still evaluating these. We think the round is kind of neat. It softens the space. It maybe draws you in visually to the center art piece, but we're, as I say, we're still evaluating that as an option. So standing from the east, looking in, the gateway, you can see the raised planters. Again, we're evaluating two options, either cypress or concrete for those raised planters. Cypress is very durable and very expensive, and somewhat similar characteristics to Doug Fir, or sometimes people point to redwood as being very durable. It's actually more durable, in my opinion, than redwood. But it's very pricey, especially with some of the recent tariffs, so we're evaluating concrete and being sure that, you know, how would it look and how would it perform compared to the cypress?
What would the maintenance costs over the long-term difference be between the material you were just talking about and concrete?
Right. You know, certainly, concrete has fewer things that can go wrong, especially long-term. You know, cypress should have a very long life term, but yeah, at some point, pick a number, 30, 40, 50 years.
You've got to stain it and clean it and that kind of stuff.
Yeah. It doesn't need to be stained, or, and it weathers to a silver gray like teak does, and so it wouldn't require painting. But yeah, you know, I would anticipate 30, 40 years from now, there might be something that's damaged by a piece of heavy equipment. A piece of concrete might have a chip, but the cypress may have a split or a board that would need to be replaced, those types of items. The trellis and the pergola would be built out of cypress, and again, we think it's just let that natural beauty, that gray out to the silver of its natural characteristics. So this is a slice from east to west to the middle of the site. To the left is the entrance trellis. You can see the long, low piece next to it is the harvest table, and then the central pergola, and then to the right, the storage building with the trellis coming up off at an angle. And that's purposeful, as well as the trees on the right side, which is the west side. A park like this typically gets its hottest in the late afternoon, early evening, and that's interesting enough, a lot of times when you have your peak use as well. So we want to really provide some good shade from that low afternoon, early evening sun.
The trees that you're choosing, what height size are you looking at?
I'd call it a medium-sized tree. I think we're looking at black gum, which is not planted near enough. It's a native, has a bronze fall color, beautiful branching habit in the winter when its leaves are not there.
Right. So it'll be 25-foot tall, maybe?
Yeah, uh-huh, 25 by 20 wide. And we are irrigating the site, and so one thing black gums do like is a little extra moisture every now and then in the heat of August, so they should do very well with So this is a slice in the other direction, Isles to the left, the street to the right, and this shows the circular pergola in the middle. One little detail I didn't mention, you see little figures on the left. When you enter, see if I can go backwards. When you enter from the north, there we go, that gateway lines up through the pergola to the wall along the north side of Isles, and so that section right there, about 15 feet wide, we want to mount polished stainless steel and railing, like the ballet railing where they practice. We think that'd be a wonderful thing for kids and adults, if they want to sort of see themselves and hold on to the ballet railing, again, as a tribute to Petra's interest in ballet as well. So these are some study, three-dimensional, of kind of hovering over the northeast corner, looking back to the southwest. The main entrance trellis. Looking back towards the east, these were some study sketches that we were, wanted to be sure we had the right scale, and I think you can see from these that there's going to have really some interesting places and shapes for people to use the park. And we put a late afternoon sun on it, so you can see where shadows are being cast as well.
Which one of those two entrances will be at grade for handicap accessible?
You know, both will be. We've got a lint on the east side that's about four to five inches, and we're working so we can get a 5% slope up, so it's not even considered a ramp for ADA, and it's easier even on the north. I never like it when we have just one step. One step's a tripper.
Yeah.
So I really don't want to have to have a four-inch, five-inch step.
Good idea.
And it's kind of rough around that edge as right now, where the concrete and the terrazzo, so we anticipate encapsulating that. Again, we don't want to tear into it, so we'll just build a new curve that encapsulates that rough edge and brings it up as a nice, clean edge. Now, this is a detail of the circular pergola. I don't have one of the square one yet, but as I say, we're looking at that. So we had an excellent meeting a week or so ago, and we think we've got a strong design direction. We are working on refining the budget. We think we're in budget with these revisions, and we want to refine the design and then go out to bid with construction documents anticipating breaking ground in September. Given that, we probably will get a lot of the hardscape done this year, but then we would wait until April for the plantings, when we can get good quality stock and have it going at an ideal time. So I'd love to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dennis. Any questions, Counsel?
Is there going to be a mural on that north wall?
You know, you picked up on that in those early three-dimensional drawings, didn't you? We had discussed it, and you know, it's Isles' wall. And we had budget concerns, and so we took the mural out, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Well, we, obviously, we appreciate the contribution to the community, and it looks like it's going to be absolutely wonderful, clean up that corner, and also with its relationship to the Arts Convention Center, I think it's going to be really fantastic. Also, providing a good gathering place and a public place for people to eat, which they like to do on the square, so solving a lot of little issues for us, and we really appreciate it. Thank you for the presentation, Counsel. Any other questions? All right, great. So we'll move on to our resolutions, action items, and ordinances. The first is approval of our financial support for Area 15 Regional Planning Commission. This is an annual fee that the city contributes to the regional cog, and it's 47 cents per capita. So we entertain a motion to approve the payment to Area 15.
So moved.
Second by Hamilton, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay, thank you. Next, I'll turn it over to Aaron.
Recently, we put a request out for a proposal for a comprehensive plan. As you all well know, we have our, our comprehensive plan was written in 1995, expired, well, the life expectancy of a comprehensive plan usually expires around 20 years. So we received proposals for a comprehensive plan from five different companies. After reviewing those proposals, I, the mayor and I requested to interview two different companies. One was Confluence out of Des Moines, and the other one was RDG. After doing those interviews, we felt that the best fiscal and best proposal that we could get for our dollars would be through Confluence. So I'm requesting that we approve that proposal and have Confluence start doing their thing for the comp plan starting in July. Just so you know, Chris Shires is here from Confluence if you have any questions for him.
So I, thanks, Aaron. This is not our 1995 comprehensive plan that we're going to be going through. I think it's something more comprehensive, obviously, and it is going to be a good opportunity to engage the community. It's kind of a cross between some of the needs and projections that we have from an infrastructure standpoint, from a land use and expansion standpoint, along with strategic planning for the city. So there are going to be some wonderful creative elements to this that will get a lot of folks together in public meetings to weigh in on. Obviously, there are a lot of things that we have done as a community that can tie into this planning process already. We were very impressed with the work that they've done in some other Iowa communities recently, and we think it's going to be a great process, and it is going to get started right away. So I would second the recommendation by Aaron to approve Confluence for the strategic plan.
It's not, it is budgeted.
Yes, it is budgeted.
But also, it's required for some of our TIF agreements and that kind of thing.
Yeah, state law requires, yeah, state law requires us to have a plan for tax increment financing, along with if we were to do some annexing down the road, those things all require a plan.
Yeah, which are things that we are doing.
Yeah.
Yes. So would entertain a motion to approve, Tom?
I would approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Thompson.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Mayor, could we just get an idea of kind of what the process looks like and the timeframe from our?
Chris, sure. I told them somebody may call them up, so.
Chris Shires, Principal of Confluence out of our Des Moines office, and thank you for asking me a question, because I always like to speak, so any time I get an opportunity. So a little bit on what the timeline looks like. So we'll get started right away. So July 1st is a great start time. We need to start off with a kickoff meeting with the steering committee, so formulating first, a group to kind of spearhead the project. And then the entire timeline, we broke it into four phases, but the timeline is about a one-year process, so to get that all wrapped up. And I can go into much more detail if you want, or just stop right there, because again, I'm always happy to talk.
Break down your year.
Okay, so let me just do that. Go for my notes, I don't forget something. So I talked about being in four phases, four tasks. So that first task is really the project kickoff, and we're doing all of our research and analysis of what you've got going on. And I'm really excited, because I've already looked, you've done some great strategic planning, as you guys know. It's great running into a community that already is thinking big, dreaming big, and accomplishing things. You have a vision, you have a direction, so I'm excited to kind of figure out, are we still headed in the same direction? What's those next great strategic planning items? But that really is where we're starting off in that task one, about two months, figuring out what we have. Task two, now we're talking about that vision input and direction. We're hearing from the general public. We're doing stakeholder interviews. We're hearing back even from the elected officials in your planning commission, and that is also about a two-month process to gather all that public input. Here's what we've done in the past. Here's what we have today. What do we want? What's our future as a community continue to look like? Then when we're done doing that analysis, phase one, phase two, that public input, stakeholder input, phase three, which is the longest phase, which we have this at about five to six months, is that plan draft, where we're coming up with all the different planned elements, the planned chapters, and there's a lot of different ways to do comprehensive planning, so we haven't even settled on exactly one way. Need to hear from everybody first on what's most important to this community. That way, this plan we create is calibrated for your values. And then from that, roll that draft back first to the steering committee, then back to the elected officials and the general public. It's just a draft. Did we hear you all right? Then we can make any adjustments, edits and updates. And then in that task four, which we've set aside two to three months, is where we do the final plan adoption, going through the legal process of the official planning zoning commission review and approval, and I should say, recommendation, and then the final review and approval by the city council, by this board. And so, and the one other thing I would add as far as the value of comprehensive planning, it's also your legal justification for zoning in your zoning regulations.
Great, thank you, Chris. We do have some copies of plans that they have completed for other communities to review, give you a good idea of some of the content and some of the thoroughness of what we're going to explore. And then, you know, we were also very impressed with the metrics pieces that you do within this process, and I think you've got some folks that are really skilled in that area.
Yes, thank you. We really do like to get in a little bit of the weeds about what is going on, what's past, tell us, may show for our future.
Great, okay. Any other questions, Counsel? All right, thank you very much, Chris. Appreciate you coming down this evening. We look forward to getting started.
Thank you.
And we've completed our vote, right?
Yes.
Okay, great, so we'll move on. Next, we'll be accepting the 2018 sanitary sewer lining project as final. Mel, recommendation?
This contract with S.A.K. Construction out of O'Fallon, Missouri. Attached to the memo is the two pay estimates, and the one thing I wanted to point out is one of the major items in this project was to line the sanitary sewer under the bridge at Lamson Woods that also goes through the State Forest Preserve. We've noticed actually some rather large holes in it, so we were able to do surface patching to it, but the liner will allow continued use of that line for a while and not require us to remove the bridge or anything like that. So this, that was a good part of this project, and that included, everything went very well, and we recommend accepting the project as final.
Okay. All that recommendation, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Flornoy. Any other questions? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mel. Next, Counsel, we have the consideration award of contract for a phase-two paving project, and we did have a bid opening. Steve Hausner's here from French Renniker. Steve, if you'd lead us through the companies that bid and who our successful bid is.
Yeah, okay, so I gave you just a brief summary of the project last, maybe it was a month ago when you scheduled the public hearing. We did have four bidders. Jones Contracting, D.C. Concrete out of Dowd's, Jones is out of West Point, M.J. Daly out of Burlington, and Wesley Barton out of Mount Pleasant. Oddly enough, the bottom two bids are very close together, and so are the top two bids. So Jones was the low at $215,248, and all bids happened to be underneath our estimate, so it looks like prices are doing very good this year.
Steve, would you just, for the public, read out the other bid totals at companies?
Yes, D.C. Concrete was $218,573. M.J. Daly was $233,182.55. And Wesley Barton was $233,580.50.
Okay, thank you. So the recommendation, Counsel, is to award to Jones Contracting of West Point, and the amount $215,248.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Thompson. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Next, Counsel, we'll set a public hearing, and this will be for approval of plans and specifications, forms of contract, and engineer's estimate for Maple and Park Street overlays. We'll set that for our next meeting on July 9th at 7:00 PM. Motion to approve the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Aaron, I'll turn that over to you. We have two contracts with our local golf courses.
Yeah, the next two proposals for contract are both, they're actually identical as far as cost for per thousand gallons of water. Over the last spring, it became kind of apparent that we needed to have something in place to kind of understand who was in charge of what and who was paying for what for when we were providing irrigation water for both country clubs. The Water and Sewer Utilities Committee looked at these along with our city attorney, and at this point, they're both in, that committee along with our city attorneys in agreement that these contracts would be wise to give to the golf courses for their signs so that they, to get these contracts in place.
Okay, any questions, Counsel, on the agreements? If not, we'll take the first one, which is the graywater contract with Fairfield Golf and Country Club.
So moved.
Moved by Thompson to approve.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay, thank you. And the next would be the graywater contract with the Walton Club. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second by Gandy, and second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay, thank you. Next, Counsel, we have the second reading of the ordinance, which is for the Division of Revenues under Iowa Code 403.19, and this is a special fund for payment of principal and interest from the TIF that will be recovered for the projects in those areas. This is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing at this time and ask if there's any public comment. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion to move this from the second to the third reading.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. Next, Counsel, we'll move to our third and final reading of the natural gas contract with Alliant Energy. Again, a 25-year contract with five-year intervals for a renegotiation or opting out. This is a public hearing, so we'll open up the public hearing at this time and ask if there's any comment. Not seeing any, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve the third and final reading.
So moved.
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Thank you. As I wanted to mention, just a couple of things. One is, I think you all received at least one phone call, maybe more, about fireworks starting early, whether that is a function of people not knowing that we changed the dates, even though this is still a lot earlier than what we had allowed even last year. And I just want to bring that up so that there's a little bit more attention. Obviously, our police department is responding to complaints, and if there's something specific about an address and location where this is taking place, I'm sure they'll follow it up, but if it's a general complaint, it's hard explaining that we're not, we can't really afford our police force to be proactive in this regard, just, you know, responding to those areas that they can. The other thing that comes up is the access, the sales access to the fireworks, I think, really contributes to the fact that once you own them, it's just hard not to break open the pack and light a fuse. So that does contribute it. I know there really isn't much we can do with that, but just a reminder to the community that we have a refined ordinance down to two days. At the next meeting, Council, we're going to bring a proposal to join in with the Fairfield Economic Development Association in sponsoring a special economic development planning process that'll take place this summer and into the fall, referring to it as a boot camp with a special focus on food-based businesses and agriculture. There's an expert out of Wisconsin Extension who has a lot of business development experience in the food industry and in venture capital support for these base businesses. There are a number of companies in our community that do have footholds in these areas. We think that encouraging the development of these businesses and helping to grow them will be good for our community long term. Most of the people in this business sector right now are also very young people, so we want to encourage the growth and development of some of these young businesses. It's a modest amount that we're, to host the event, it's about $3,000, so I will be coming back with a request to the Council at our next meeting for a third of that, $1,000 sponsorship out of our local option sales tax, but nothing formally to present tonight. That's everything I had, so we'll move on to our committee reports. Water and Sewer Utilities Committee.
I filled in for Chairperson Martha, who was unable to make it. Our one item was just those gray water contracts, which we discussed at length and felt that the contracts that we passed earlier in the meeting were very fair.
Okay, thank you. Ways and Means Committee, Tom?
Yes, we had a meeting tonight to discuss, in addition to the solar project at the airport, with the one that we had previously approved, they have come back and asked us if we would like to expand that a little bit to include the runway lights. It's a smaller project, the payback on it is not quite as great as what we had on the original one. The cost was 12,000, it was under $12,000, I think, if I remember correctly. And so from a long-term standpoint, it seemed like something that fit in very well with what we had already done there. So the recommendation of the committee was to ask the Council to approve that addition to that project.
Okay. And that is action, you're asking the Council to take the seats?
Yes, we would like the Council to take that action.
So we have a motion then to approve the extension of the solar project at the Fairfield Airport?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, second.
Yes, sorry. Second by Gandy, yep. Any other discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
I'm staying.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next would be the Economic Development Committee.
We met prior to the council meeting this evening at 6:00. We've been in discussions with the owner of Red Cannon concerning the contract we have with him for the building that he is in, that actually belongs to the city at this present time. We have come to an agreement in principle so far with Deion, and our city attorney will define that agreement more thoroughly coming up this week, so that we can have an agreement moving forward with Deion in order to keep the business, and hopefully he can grow it as he has already agreed to in principle with us.
Okay, very good, so that'll be, that's.
We'll have more, we'll have the finalized agreement coming up shortly, probably within the next couple of weeks.
And is that coming from our side, or is it?
It's coming from both of us. We're negotiating with Deion, and he is negotiating with us concerning the clause of $15,000 payment if employment numbers weren't reached during the period of the first agreement. That wasn't met, so there is a proposal of a buydown to reduce that amount, and then a further proposal for the remainder of that amount to be negotiated over the next two years or bought down over the next two years.
Okay, great, thank you. Beautification Commission, I don't see anyone here that's representing, but there are.
I can talk about that one.
Proposed amendments that you've seen, so go ahead, Michael.
So I was asked by some city staff to meet with the Beautification Commission co-chairs to help them understand how to go about the process of amending the city code. They had changed their bylaws to change their total number of members from nine to 10, but that's not sufficient, it needs to be done by the code. So we sat down and reviewed the code and found the first is one recommendation, they would like to officially change their memberships to 10 instead of nine. They'd also like to simplify when they give their reports. The current code says that they have to give an end-of-the-year report before the end of the year, and then they also have to give a year, plans for the coming year within the first month or two of the new year. We figured, why don't you just do them both at the same meeting? So that's what the number two is about. Number three, when we spoke, I didn't recommend that would be actually in the code, but it's just a matter of if the city would pass some sort of resolution making some rules for the plantings within the nodes downtown, because currently, they just fall within our standard right-of-way plantings, but this would just mean that not anyone could plant in them, that we would just say that the city crews and beautification commission volunteers would be the ones to maintain those in terms of adding or removing plant material. So that probably wouldn't be in the code. Now, we need to get those other two written up officially to pass it as an amendment, but this was just the first step, was to make sure the Council was agreeable to these.
Now, on the item number three, will Beautification Commission provide a list of names of the actual volunteers that are allowed to do that, so that we have some definition, so that if I go out and do something and I'm not on that list, but I say I'm volunteering for the Beautification Commission to do this?
Yeah.
We don't have that happen.
Well, we can work on the wording, maybe it's Beautification Commission in conjunction with city crews or something, just to kind of bring it back to the city. I mean, Beautification Commission is a city commission, but that change, that list is always obviously going to be changing, and you're right, someone who's not maybe an official commission member may be doing something on their behalf.
Volunteering under the auspices.
Right, yeah, I would specify, rather than city crews, just make it parks.
Parks.
Or park director, yeah, because they're most connected to that, but I think most of the responsibility will lie with the Beautification Commissions. They don't have another thing to do, but just so that they can check with them.
So Aaron, do you want to work on this to get the first two as an amendment to the ordinance? I can help you with it if you want.
Sure.
And the third, maybe as a resolution of some kind, that creates a policy for the downtown nodes.
Right. Okay, so that'll come back to the Council when that's prepared, thank you. And then Walking College report?
I was invited to serve on a panel for this event, this group that I didn't even know existed, it's called the Iowa Walking College. There's a little video that we'll play another time, but it's just an interesting group. It's essentially collaborative effort between the Healthy Estate Initiatives, Healthy Hometown, DOT, and the State Health Department to expand walking and biking opportunities here in Iowa. And I just learned a little bit that day, there was Assistant City Manager from Cedar Rapids was there, and she was talking about that they've used their 1% local option sales tax strictly for street repair, and that involves a lot of one-way to two-way conversion. And they were talking about that, giving a little history, that the one-way streets were, there's some interesting history behind it, some of it was Cold War fears of that city centers would be attacked, and they'd want to be able to get, move people out as fast as possible. So one-way streets really are designed to move, to move traffic outside of city centers, not so much for bringing people in, which is the trend that we have now. We want people to come to our downtown, spend time there. So they've done a lot of conversions, and they said, you know, first, there are people who are not happy with it, but very quickly, within maybe a year, everyone's raving about it, even the people who had previously complained, they didn't want to see it, have to admit, it's a lot easier to get around. So if you want to learn more, check out that website.
The other thing, too, is that this is likely to come out in our comprehensive plan, it has in other cities, and Confluence has worked on policy for that, so I expect this would be a good time to focus on some of those.
Well, and the sidewalk issue, just real quick, is it's very similar in other towns to what we have, where we're not all ADA compliant, we're all working towards that, and there are a lot of spaces where there are gaps in our sidewalks, and then suddenly there's nothing, and then next block there is something. So maybe, you know, if we could put that in our plan to try to connect those gaps, I'm going to be working on a sidewalk inventory to locate those places and then prioritize them in terms of which ones would make the most impact if we did a small sidewalk project every year. I think that our community would really appreciate if we did that. The concept is that a street isn't just for vehicles, you have to think of the whole, you have to think about every type of traveler, so pedestrians, cyclists, vehicles, and people in wheelchairs.
Complete streets, okay. Thank you, Michael. Next, we'll move on to our project update. Mel?
One item that I did not have on the update that we talked about earlier with the proposed park at the Tribune Building location, we are going to be putting up barricades on that this week to get the parking off of it, but now that the concept has been presented to the public, then you can understand why that we're going to remove, not we, the owner has requested that there's no parking on it. So that is not in my update, but we'll be doing that this week. Other than that, the public has been very understanding of the construction going on through town, but we are just getting in the middle of the swing of road construction, particularly for the year. The 227th Street project started today, they moved equipment out there, and on that project, even though the county is the contracting authority, it doesn't really stop you guys from getting calls and questions on the project, so I'll keep giving you updates as we go. That road is, road closed signs are up on 227th now with a detour marked. There was a little misunderstanding with some of the county residents out there, is the work is expected to be completed in the end of October, but the road, 227th, is expected to be back open at the end of August. So there's some multiple completion dates on that project that I wanted to get out there for your information. Then also, the other one I want to point out that will likely start prior to the next project update is the alleys here around City Hall within this block, that that's going to be starting in the next couple of weeks. The alleys will be closed during that construction. We're going to be working with particularly the funeral home on making sure they have access when they need it, but what the public will probably notice the most is that the drop box is not going to be usable during that time, particularly, you're not going to be able to drive up to it. It'll still be accessed, you can park your car and walk up to it if it's at an evening and you want to use the drop box, but it'll be a little bit of a change during this construction, and we'll get it back up and open as soon as we can. Once we do have a more firm schedule, we will notify property owners and as well utility users that that's not going to be an option, so. Other than that, we appreciate everyone's cooperation, particularly the flooding on Deion Burlington last week, but projects continue to move forward, and hopefully we have better weather than we did this last week to move things forward.
Great, thank you, Mel. Any questions for Melanie at this point? And we will be closed on June 29, Friday?
Yep, we are getting a switch over to a new server, which is different from our old new server because of some issues that we found out with our provider. We're getting an actual new server rather than a refurbished server. So that'll be getting switched over here the end of this month, or the end of this week. The office will be closed to the general public, the folks in the office will still be doing, kind of doing some cleaning odds and ends stuff that we needed to get done that we just can't get done when serving public during those times. So that's what's going to happen on the 29th. Got a phone call last week of kind of an interesting thing, the, some of the promotional folks up at Bravo Sports Marketing or the University of Iowa has asked us to partner in a Fairfield Community Night with Hawkeye football, so for the University of Iowa game with Northern Iowa on September 15, they're looking at selling adult tickets for $35 and youth tickets for $25 to have a Fairfield Community Night. You're allowed, you can also buy tailgating pass where they have Fry Fest, and you can get food and beverages there also, so. They'd like us to try and beat the old record of 326 tickets sold to Grinnell, but I don't know if we'll do that, but we could certainly give her a good try.
Okay, so is this a decision, are we doing this? Are we taking, the city taking the lead?
Yeah, we really don't have to do much of anything other than to put it out, so they're handling it and going from there.
Okay. All right, very good.
Do you have one for Iowa State?
They haven't called an ass, but I'd be happy to do it for them, too.
What time, what time of day is that game?
Oh, that game is a 6:30 kickoff in the evening.
Good, won't interfere with kids' day.
Oh, it's on.
Oh, it's kids', that's early.
November 15 is kids' day.
That's right, yep.
This year.
So you can do both.
Yeah, that's why I asked, what time was kickoff?
All right, any other business for the Council this evening? Not entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton? Second by Thompson. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign?
Pancake?